Agenda this evening is the roll call and injections.
Commissioner Hussein.
President.
Commissioner Pika.
Here.
Commissioner Robbins.
Here.
Commissioner Huber is absent with notice. Commissioner Van Hoff.
Here.
Commissioner Henches.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Thank you. At the end of the podium is our planning manager Brad Davis. Next to him is Rachel Nosbush, our deputy clerk to the board. In the audience this evening, we have Marty Schmitz, our zoning administrator, and Nathan Hall, our associate planner. And I also have seen Greg Wagner, our senior planner, I think is working on the video part of this this evening. And we have also Tom Wolf, our county commissioner in the audience. Good evening, Mr. Wolf. Our first item of business is approval of the August 14th, 2023 meeting minutes. The commissioners have all been sent copies of the minutes. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes as printed? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
I have motions by Commissioner Robbins. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Henches. Do I have any discussion on that? Hearing none, I will call for a voice vote. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The minutes are approved. Our next item is our consent agenda. I will open a public hearing to consider the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered by the planning commission to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a planning commission board member or a member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda to be considered separately. We have only one item on the consent agenda this evening. It's number 2023-062. It's a request for preliminary plat and final plat of Hickory Hills Fourth Edition consisting of two lots on 7.5 acres. Kyle and Elaine Cilic, co-counselor and applicant and property owner in Section 35 of Spring Lake Township. Would anyone like that removed from the consent agenda? Okay. That item will be considered then with consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion at this time to close consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Robbins, second.
So moved.
Second by Commissioner Henches. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. And now to approve the consent agenda is printed, I'll consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Consent agenda.
I have a motion by Commissioner Watson to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Pika. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a vote, a voice vote. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. All right, our first public hearing this evening is number 2023-057. It's a request for preliminary plat and final plat of Shimick Acres consisting of two outlots and two lots and two outlots on 70.50 acres. John and Jody Shimick are the applicants and property owners in Section 20 of Spring Lake Township. And I see Mr. Wagner will be making our staff report this evening. Good evening, Mr. Wagner.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. So on the screen is the site location map of the subject parcels in Section 20 of Spring Lake Township. The 20 acre parcel here is the one that is owned by the applicants, John and Jody Shimick. So they their property is part of the Monarch Meadows development, which includes the lots along Butterfly Lane as well as a couple larger properties to the south of there. The other parcel is Outlot A, yeah, Outlot A of Jabbs Edition, which was created when a residential property over here was split off, one of our ag splits historically. So this property here is also involved as part of the plat, which I'll kind of go through here. You can see on the Shimick property, it's a 20 acre parcel. John and Jody purchased it, I believe, in the late 1990s, built their home in the early 2000s. And then on the north side of the property is a large indoor horse riding arena and storage facility. The request before you tonight is to subdivide the Shimick property into two lots. When the Monarch Meadows development that it's part of was created back in the late 90s, that was a residential cluster development, which has one dwelling per 10 acres zoning. So that development consisted of 25 lots on 255 acres. So that development completely utilized all the available building rights that were available on that property. And as I said, that included these two and a half acre residential lots, included the Shimick property, which is 20 acres. The property here is 10 acres. And then there's these like two larger lots here, which were agricultural. And that's where the cluster came from. They took all the building rights off of these larger parcels and clustered them on Butterfly Lane. Fast forward to today, and now what Shimicks are looking to do is obtain one additional building right. They would like to split their property. They've lived on it for many years. It's a large home. They want to essentially downsize, so potentially then sell their home and build a new home just kind of south of that shed. As I said, there's no building rights left in this development, so they contacted their neighbor who owns this 50.5 acre outlot. This is also zone one dwelling per 10 acres. So at 50.5 acres, there are five building rights associated with it. So what they're proposing is to split this existing agricultural outlot into two outlots. 40 acres would be an Outlot A, and then Outlot B would be a 10 acre parcel. They would take that building right, because it's adjacent to theirs. We are allowed, the county ordinance does allow transfer with adjacent properties. And so they would take the building right off of the 10 acres of Outlot B and transfer it over here and create a second building site. So everything in this area is zone one per 10 or one dwelling per 10 acres. They're essentially taking one of the five here, moving it over here, so Outlot B would then have no additional building rights. Outlot A would still have four or be left with four. So that's kind of the general explanation. I know it's some land use and shifting some things around, but because it's adjacent, you are able to transfer. We commonly have some developers or some developments where there's, if you remember last year, just to the east of this is a development called Amazed Acres, which was before this commission. That development had three larger parcels that they utilized to move the density around to create two and a half acre lots. So it's kind of the same thing, except the agricultural land is remaining agricultural. There's going to be no building rights on that at this time. So the applicants have, they're showing their proposed new home site just south of their large riding arena facility. They have indicated they're also downsizing their horses. They previously had a lot of horses for their kids. They're reducing the number to just a couple, I believe. They're removing some of the outdoor riding rings that were there. They're going to leave the building. As it indicated in the staff report, it is an indoor riding arena. It's larger than what normally would be allowed, but the county has not historically made people take down functioning buildings. It just becomes a non-conforming structure. So it would then follow the non-conforming rules that are in place for any non-conforming structure, which typically mean that if a building is damaged or destroyed, you have 180 days to rebuild it to the same dimensions. Otherwise, you have to comply with the new rules. They've had two septic sites identified for the new lot. Those have both been approved by Environmental Services. Their existing home has a functioning septic, and there's an alternate site for the existing home. The only unresolved issue that is going to probably come back before the county board of adjustment pertains to the driveway. So currently Butterfly Lane ends in a, it's a paved township roadway that ends in a cul-de-sac. The Shimick driveway currently comes out the south end right here and goes down to their home, and then also goes to the riding arena right here. Their intention is to use that existing driveway and just split off and come to their new house. The issue we have is that county ordinance requires each lot to have 66 feet on a publicly maintained road. Currently, as this is proposed, their new Lot Two would have frontage only on publicly dedicated right of way. So Lot Two would not meet that requirement. We spoke with the applicant and with Spring Lake Township, this is something that they're going to be discussing with the township. More than likely, their two options are to extend the road, so basically extend the cul-de-sac to, you know, probably another 100 feet to like right here, or to apply for variance from the right road right of way. We have a condition in the staff report that that needs to be addressed before this would go to county board. So at this point, staff is comfortable recommending the plat proceed forward. We just won't take it to the county board. And more than likely, they'll apply, I think what they're telling us is they're going to apply for variance and come back before the the Board of Adjustment, either in October or November, once they've met with the township and discussed it more. They did meet with the township back in August and received a recommendation on the plat, but that was before we really knew about the road issue. So they're going to go back to the township and talk about that cul-de-sac issue and what both parties want there. So with that, staff has recommended approval, subject to that condition, that we have to deal with the road issue. The township has recommended approval. The Shimicks are not here tonight, but their, the Realtor representative Julie Westman is here. If you would have any questions about the neighborhood, but I would stand for any questions at this point.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Robbins.
Wagner, if you could go back to the map of the parcel, the whole one, I just want to make sure I understand. Their intent is to build a new house on the north part of that parcel. The building that's there, already there, remains there. And then their house, their current house is on the south part of the parcel, am I right?
Correct.
And they're going to sell that?
I believe that's their intention is to, they want to, they want to down, they're at an age where their kids have moved out and they want to downsize, so they would sell that one and then build a new, smaller structure for them themselves.
Okay, but there's not a sequence on that. They could start the new one without closing on the sale of the present one, right?
Correct. Once the new lot is created, they could apply for a permit.
Right, thank you, Chair.
Other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
For sure. Henches.
Greg, with 10 acres, how many horses could they have on 10 acres?
Commissioner Henches, so the requirement under county ordinance is two productive acres for the first animal unit, which is equivalent to one horse. So on 10 productive acres, you could have nine horses. We do have a provision in ordinance that through an administrative permit, you can increase that number. So it's a review, it's a permit reviewed by county staff in the Scottsdale and Water District, mainly looking at pasture and manure management. So if you had 10 acres and you wanted to have 12 horses, you could apply for an administrative permit, and we can review that and, you know, look at how you're going to manage everything and potentially increase that number.
Okay. My only concern was maybe we need to put something in that specifies they can have up to 10 horses, because they're still going to have this great big indoor arena. And believe me, that will accommodate a lot more than 10 horses if you if you wanted to have more than that.
They would be fine.
Yep, and we can certainly do that. If you want to make it a condition of the plat, we can do that. But with the smaller lot, the new lot would be just over seven acres, so technically they'd be limited to probably five or six.
Okay.
Any other questions? I was down at the site today, looking at it, and we're essentially creating a flag lot here. On the existing house lot, and I know that the new one has two septic sites located, is there two septic sites on the existing lot? Because they have the one that's operating now, and then we always identify a second site.
Sorry. Yep, Mr. Chair, so the existing septic is kind of right here, where you see all these little words. That's, those are indicating where the caps and stuff are for the tanks, or the existing septic is here. They're basically right next to each other, so.
Okay.
Yep.
That was my only question.
Okay. Mr. Chairman. Greg.
Commissioner.
The outlots, who owns the outlots?
So the outlots are owned by their neighbor. It was indicated in the staff report, so his name is Jaroslav Merza.
Okay.
So he would retain ownership of both outlots. What they've agreed to was just basically some sort of agreement to obtain that building right from what is going to be Outlot B. That is a, you know, private matter between the two parties, but, so he would retain the outlots and any development rights that are associated with those.
So would Outlot B never be able to be developed?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Henches, so not saying never, there are some zoning, so right now it's zone one per 10. Back in 2009, the township, Spring Lake Township, I don't know if you were on the commission, but the township in Cedar Lake and New Market, we went through this detailed area plan study to look at allowing additional development in Spring Lake Township. So residents in Spring Lake Township, essentially east of Highway 13, have the ability to request a rezoning to go down to two and a half acre lots. So he would have to make application to do that. I know, I spoke to a couple neighbors who called me when they got the public hearing. He has not approached the county about doing any development on that property, so at this point, you know, we don't know what his plans are right now. It's farmland, and until he contacts us, we, you know, we don't know.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Mr. Wagner? This is a public hearing. If, thank you for your report. If anyone would like to come up and make comments on this application before us, they can come up to the podium. There's a little sign up sheet on there. Please start with your name. Anyone rushing or moving or even looking at the podium? Oh, someone's coming up. Great.
All right. Hey, Kirsten Cook, resident of Butterfly Lane. We had a question. There's a few of us neighbors, so our next door neighbors are a few that did talk to you. Everything that's kind of been outlined with the Shimick's property, everybody on the street seems pretty comfortable with, other than we just kind of want to figure out the driveway piece, because there is that concern of if they do expand where Butterfly Lane dead ends into that cul-de-sac, does that set precedent for future development of that road going all the way through to Vergis? And that's a concern of a lot of the residents at the end of the street. We all have kids. It's a dead end. Keeping things around like 25, 30 miles an hour is a big concern of ours. So we just wanted to broach that and don't know the appropriate form to really open that conversation.
And I think I'll have Mr. Wagner address that, because it's a valid concern. And it is like right now, like you said, it dead ends the street. It doesn't go through to anywhere, so I can see that. But Mr. Wagner will address that.
So, yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, so the best way I can explain it is, so as I mentioned, back in 2009, Spring Lake Township approached Scott County. This area, as I said, had historically been one dwelling per 10 acres. The development that Ms. Cook lives in, Butterfly Lane, is an example of a cluster development, so where you take that density and you cluster it down to two and a half acres, and you preserve these larger areas of farmland. Well, in 2009, the town board, you know, worked with the county and basically said, we, Spring Lake Township would want their residents to have the option of further development of their property down to the two and a half acre density, so one house per two and a half acres. So essentially, something similar to what was done on Butterfly Lane. And then just to the east is Amazed Acres, so that was approved last year, I believe, two and a half acre lots. So to her question, when, let's see, I'll zoom in on here. When their development was put in, maybe I should go to the aerial. There we go. So when the Monarch Meadows development where Ms. Cook and a lot of the residents was put in, the right of way for the road was dedicated to the eastern property line. So it wasn't built all the way to the east property line, but it was dedicated in anticipation that if and when the adjacent property developed, that road would be extended, extended through. And that's, as the commission knows, a development policy to connect up cul-de-sacs, extend roads. And so if and when this property owner chooses to develop, which it's been sitting there for many years right now, but if he walks in tomorrow or 10 years from now, the plan would be that the right of way corridor is there. Whether Shimicks do this or not, the land is there for the road to be extended and somehow connect out to Vergis. So that would be the long term plan if that person chooses to develop.
But there's nothing on the, no application or anything before us at this time?
He has, he has not spoken to the county about doing anything there yet, so.
Mr. Chairman, Greg, but the point is, it's whether or not the Shimicks do it. That still exists.
Yep, if the Shimicks were not here with this application.
Right of way still exists on that.
The right of way still exists, so if they didn't do this and Mr. Merza came in with an application to subdivide, he could extend the road.
Okay, thank you.
And that right of way has existed since the road was put in?
It was dedicated with the development of Monarch Meadows and Butterfly Lane.
Does that answer your question?
For now, yeah.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? And at this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Henches, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robbins. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
And at this time, I'll entertain a motion for action on this item before us.
Sir Chairman, based on the criteria for approval listed in the staff report, I recommend approval of the preliminary and final plat of Shimick Acres consisting of two lots and two outlots on 70.50 acres. Knowing that this recommendation is subject to conditions listed in that, must be satisfactorily addressed prior to county board consideration, also recognizing we have a road issue at easement to be considered later.
And motion by Commissioner Watson. Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Second by Commissioner Robbins.
One added, the township has approved.
Okay.
Right.
You accept that amendment? You have a second?
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion before?
Chairman, I have one question. This isn't going, though, to the board until some things happen before this. Is that right, Mr. Wagner?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Robbins, yes. We, so we listed in the staff report six conditions, which a lot of them are general conditions, but the first one talks about the cul-de-sac issue and how they access that. So they will need to go back to the township, have a meeting with the town board, and then make a decision either to extend the road or to apply for variance. So once we know that, we will not send it to the county board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for that clarification. Any further discussion on this? This time, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, that has been approved. Our next item is a request for a conditional use permit to construct and operate an equipment dealership and preliminary and final plat of Lano addition, Kurt Lano applicant, and Shock P. North LLC, property owner, in Section 21 of Louisville Township. And I see that Marty Schmitz is making our staff report this evening. Good evening, Marty.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, on the screen, you can see the site location map for the proposed plat and conditional use permit. The parcel itself consists of about 4.25 acres. It's Zone C1 Commercial, and it's located in Section 21 of Louisville Township. The western boundary of the site is Johnson Memorial Drive or State Highway 169. The southern boundary is 133rd Street West, and the eastern boundary is Louisville Road. For a little bit of context, about a quarter of mile to the north is the intersection of 169, State Highway 41, and County Road 78. Here's an aerial photo of the property. Property in the past has been used for agricultural purposes. There are no wetlands on the property. Adjacent land uses include Lano Equipment's current sales yard and service center here to the south. Over here to the east is Louisville Lanes, a bowling alley, bar restaurant facility. To the west of 169, this building here is part of the Demcon complex of buildings. And down here, the storage is part of the anchor block. Property to the west of 169 is predominantly industrial zoned. Property on the east side is commercially zoned. I'm going to jump now to preliminary plat. This doesn't show a lot of information. We got 169 on the west, Louisville Lane on the east, and 133rd on the south. The applicants are proposing to essentially develop the site in phases for a few different reasons. The first phase is proposed to include a 44 by 100 square, 100 foot metal building here on the north end of the property. These areas on the property that are shaded in gray would be essentially the sales yard. They're all set back 20 feet from the road right of way as required by ordinance, and they would be paved. Primary and alternate drain field sites are located here on the northeast corner. These sites have been reviewed and approved by our Environmental Services Office. The applicant has done a resource management plan, showing how water will be managed on the site. Water will be directed to the western boundary adjacent to 169, where it'll flow through infiltration basin and stormwater ponds to treat water and control runoff. The resource management plan has been reviewed by our natural resources engineer. She did recommend approval, but subject to a soil boring being done to verify the infiltration rates, so that still needs to get done. The applicant has not completed his landscape plan for the property at this point. Based on the dimensions of the property, the perimeter of the property, our ordinance would require 50 landscape units to be included with the landscape plan. In the planning report, there is a condition that requires staff and the township to approve the landscape plan prior to this item being forward to the county board for approval. The white area in the middle here would be left in grass with the initial phase of the project. And that's because Phase Two of the project would include a much larger 50,000 square foot showroom and shop facility. The applicant needs to use the space today because he needs more area to store equipment. If you've been passed there, you can see his existing site is, you know, packed to, back to fence to fence, and he's already been storing stuff over here. So he needs to move forward with the Phase One now. It does take about a year to two years to get these, this type of building. It is a concrete building once it's ordered. So that's one of the reasons for the delay. The other reason for the delay is the applicant is working to vacate 133rd Street here on the south, and then also there's some MINDOT right of way here because of some drainage that dumps out in this area. So they're looking to vacate property both MINDOT and Township right of way. They've had some discussion with Louisville Township on the vacation of 133rd Street. The township is, for the most part, supportive of it. This portion of the road only serves Lano's existing facility and their new facility. So it makes sense to vacate that. It also provides them some more space for their new building. When the new building would get constructed, they would also pave the remainder of the site for traffic circulation on the property. The way the conditional use permit has been drafted, when the applicant comes forward, once the road is vacated, he will need to, with the second phase, he will need to replat the property again and come through the conditional use permit process again. So we'll need to amend the conditional use permit and amend the plat that's been done. Let me see, I think I got the, this is the final plat drawing that was submitted, was sent out to you folks, I think, last week. I emailed it to you. So this is the final plat drawing. On this drawing, the applicant is showing the right, or the lot extending to the center of the township roads and to the center of 169. That is not typically how we have our plats typically. Typically, the lot line ends at the road right-of-way, and then the right-of-way is dedicated through the plotting process. Because of this vacation, the applicant surveyor feels that this is a better way to, to plot the property. There is a condition in, in the planning report that essentially says, prior to this going to the county board, the township and staff have to be comfortable with it. We need to hear why it, it's better to do it this way versus plot to the, to the boundaries of the right-of-way and dedicate the street before we're going to accept this plot. So we'll be reviewing that prior to county board action on this phase or this, on this final plot drawing. With that, Louisville Township did recommend approval of the, of the plot and conditional use permit at their meeting last Thursday night, subject to some conditions here that you received here this evening that need to be satisfied either prior to board action or incorporated into the conditional use permit. You also received some revised conditions where staff did include these conditions in, conditions to be satisfied prior to board action, and also conditions of approval. So we've added two conditions of approval, or two conditions within the CUP to, to include the township recommendation, one additional condition, and the conditions that need to be approved prior to board action. So with that, I will stand for any questions?
Commissioner Robbins?
Yeah, I, tell me again about this plat that goes in the middle of the road. I'm having trouble with that.
So typically, when somebody plats property, that property line ends at the road right-of-way. In this particular case, they're showing that lot line extending to the center of the road, Commissioner Robbins.
Yes.
In a typical plat, we would have that area that's in the road right-of-way dedicated to the township or min dot or the county as part of that plotting process. The, the applicant surveyor and engineer is indicating because the intent is to vacate 133rd Street, it's more difficult to do that if the lot is only plotted to the right-of-way versus the center line. I'm not convinced of that myself yet, but I haven't heard all of their discussion. So in all likelihood, the lot will get plotted to the, the road right-of-way unless the engineer and the surveyor are able to convince staff and the township that this is, this is a better way to go for the long term.
All right, thank you for that, I appreciate it. I note in the report that there's an equipment facility that's going to be built, that there's maybe sales. Can you tell us what kind of equipment it is? Is it farm equipment, construction equipment, what is it?
Predominantly construction equipment. If you've been passed there, they have a lot of trailers to move equipment on, it's skid steers, it's excavators, equipment such as that.
All right, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Pika?
Does Lano Equipment operate on a CUP as of now, or are they?
Yes, their current facility does have a conditional use permit. It was issued back in, I think, the 1970s, so it's, it's quite old.
So can that, just that CUP be extended, or do they have to open a whole new one, is, I guess, what I'm wondering?
They had a couple options here, Commissioner Pika. One, they could have reopened that conditional use permit to incorporate this property. What they chose to do is not do that, leave that property on its own by itself, under that existing conditional use permit, and look at this property on its own. So they're looking at just a conditional use permit on this northern facility.
Thank you, Murray. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question. So if the road gets vacated, then essentially you're going to have two, two of those, those two pieces of properties would essentially meet in the middle, and they'd have to, their facility being two plats.
Yes.
That's, that's ultimately.
That is correct.
So I understand that that's, that's what I thought, so that was my only question.
Okay, thank you very much, Schmitz. This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to make comment on this application, they can come up to the podium. There's a sign-up sheet at the podium, and, and start with your name. Okay. Last time I spoke too soon, so I'm just going to give it a minute here. I started to say I didn't think anyone was going to get up, and, okay. No one's going to get up and comment on it. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to approve the request.
Motion to close public hearing by Commissioner Pika, second by Commissioner Robbins. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I will entertain a motion to discussion on this item before us.
Based on the criteria for the conditional use permit, I recommend approval of the preliminary and final plot of Lano Addition and approval of the conditional use permit for Lano Equipment, Kurt Lano, to operate its equipment dealership. Knowing that this recommendation is subject to conditions that must be satisfactorily addressed prior to the county board consideration of the project, recognizing that the township has approved as well.
I have a motion by Commissioner Watson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robbins. Is there any further discussion before I call for a vote on this item? Okay, hearing none. At this time, I'll call for a vote to approve the motion that is before us at this time. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved. Thank you very much. Our next item is actually 2012-023. It's a request for an interim use permit to amend the grading plan within the approved reclamation plan, Shock P. Sand LLC, applicant, and Great Plains Sand LLC, property owner, in Section 33 of Louisville Township and Section 4 of Sand Creek Township. Commissioner Schmitz, our planning, our zoning administrator is here again with us.
Yes, on the screen is the site location map for the Shock P. Sands property. It encompasses about 205 acres. It spans two townships. This darker gray line here separates Sand Creek Township from the south, from Louisville Township to the north. Adjacent landmarks that you might recognize, 169 kind of borders the property here on the east. This is the Union Pacific Railroad that runs here on the west. Minnesota Valley Wildlife Refuge is also here on the west. To the south is Ace Auto, Interlock Concrete Products, Final Grade Excavating by the Yard, Lawn, Lawn Furniture Manufacturer. Pika Cabinets is located here. Seaver's Corn Maze is up in this area. We do have a yard waste composting facility here and a couple homes in this area here. The property is Zoned I-2. It's a heavy industrial zone property. I'm going to go to aerial photo now. It's an aerial photo of the site. Great Plains Sands received a interim use permit and development agreement to begin mining this property back in May of 2012. Later in 2012, they sold the site to Shock P. Sand. That's when they, they took over ownership. The site is a silica sand mine. They ship silica sand all over the Midwest for use in oil and gas production. With the decline of that product, they idled this facility in 2018. So this facility's been idled for the past five years. They're now saying, we don't plan on reopen it. We want to begin reclamation of the site and put it to another use. Because they've only mined about a third of the site, we need to amend the grading plan within the reclamation plan of the IUP and the developers' agreement, so that's why we're here tonight. What the proposal is to do is to take this mined silica sand, this lighter sand here that you can see, that's adjacent to their processing facility, bring that, that back to the mine area, which is here on the southern end of the property, for use as backfilling on some of their slopes, that sort of thing. And then they're also going to take some overburden material that's stockpiled in this area and other locations on the mine, put that over that silica sand, and then take the topsoil that's located in burms around the property to overlay everything and then seed it. When they are done, the site will be fairly level on the northern end where there wasn't mining that occurred there. The southern end will have some steeper slopes up to three to one, which is consistent with the original reclamation plan for this facility. The water body that'll be located here will be quite a bit smaller than what was proposed with the, with the original plan. The, the stormwater from the site will be directed either to the water body here or a stormwater facility that has been constructed here on the western edge of the property. The Shock P. Sand Review Committee did see this proposal at, at a meeting back in late June. The committee was supportive of the amendment to the grading plan within the reclamation plan, but that only. There are other elements of the reclamation plan for this facility, including a frontage road through the property, removal, and removal of some buildings. This amendment to the IUP and developers' agreement does not impact those items. They will still need to be addressed as part of the reclamation plan or as part of a future development of the site. Louisville Township did hear this request at their meeting last Thursday night, as did Sand Creek Township. Both townships are supportive of the amendment to the interim use permit and the amendment to the developers' agreement. You did receive an updated developers' agreement here tonight with the most recent language. The primary difference between that, that development agreement and the one that was in your packet is, we did agree to extend the date for complete reclamation of the site out to June 1st of 2024. The applicant's engineer is present, as is Louisville Township, and I'll stand for any questions that you would have.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Robbins?
What happens when this is all done? Do they, do you have any idea, or do they have any idea what they're going to do with the property?
In all likelihood, they will sell the property for some type of industrial use, and then the property would be plotted, and those conditional use permit, or those uses would come forward to this board through, through conditional use permits.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, care.
Mr. Pika?
Is Shock P. Sand here, or are they, okay. I just want to comment, I really appreciate taking all that sand and process and not, and putting it back in a pit and not selling it for a nickel and a dollar. I mean, I think that was a good decision, just a comment.
Any other questions for Schmitz? Okay, thank you for your report. This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to make a comment on this application in, just before us, please step up to the podium, start with your name, and sign in.
Good evening, Brian Petzel with ISG. I'm a civil engineer with ISG. I've been working with Shock P. Sands to help develop the, the updated reclamation grading plan. I don't really have anything to add, they just asked me to state for the record that there's some things in the staff report regarding the frontage roads that they don't, the language they don't agree with. Ultimately, it doesn't affect the, the IUP amendment that you're, you're voting on tonight. They just wanted to, just have that stated for the record, so.
Okay.
Otherwise, if there's any questions for me, I'll do my best to, to answer them, but otherwise, that's all I have.
Any questions?
I got one other.
Commissioner Pika?
Did you get the water truck tire fixed, or?
Yes, they did, yep, that's up, up and running again, yep.
Thank you.
I think that's it. There may be additional questions as we move on, but thank you for your comments.
Oh, well, I'm on the board, and we recommend an approval on Thursday's meeting, but we are having a lot of complaints with the dust out there, and they've been called last week and today again, and that's number one. I like the flat tire in their water truck. I think it's a poor excuse. It should be fixed pretty quick, a tire, and the way that dust was blowing last Thursday and Friday and today again is not acceptable.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Anything else? Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Henson, second by Commissioner Robbins, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
We have an item before us, entertain a motion on that item.
Mr. Chairman, based on the criteria for the approval listed in the staff report, I move to approve recommending to the county board that they amend Section 8 of the IUP located in Section 33 of Louisville Township and the north one-half, Section 4 of Sand Creek Township, as stated below, conditioned on the parties to the original developers' agreement, entering into a third amended, amended developers' agreement as approved by the county and the townships.
I have a motion by Commissioner Robbins. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Pika. Is there any further discussion on this item before us?
Mr. Chairman, is there anything, does this body of work here, are we having any impact on this dust issue?
Everybody, everybody in the valley.
I mean, is this something we can address?
It sounds like, is that, that's what you were asking about?
Yeah, because, yeah, it was, it was brought to Shock P. Sands' attention, I think, quite a bit, and why, I know there's no, maybe well water on the property, but you could pump it out of the pond, I am assuming. And I don't know why it hasn't been, but yeah, there was times that the traffic was, had to slow down because I'm kind of in that area, and all I see is brake lights because the sand is that thick, I mean, so, yeah, it's a problem.
With us.
So I don't know if there's anything this board can do with it. I know Township, you know, got many cause, being local, I got many cause and, from neighboring people, so.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could. Marty, the, this isn't done yet. I mean, there's still some disagreements, so the county board still has to act on it, right?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Robbins, that's true. The, the county board is the decision-maker here. This board's a recommending body to them. I think for the most part, the amendment language that's in the interim use permit and in the third, third amendment to the developers' agreement is consistent with what we're looking for. The dust issue has been something that's been going on for a number of months out there. We've been contacting Shock P. Sand, I've contacted them, the township has contacted them as well. So hopefully, things get better. I mean, it's, it's a very positive thing to see the site being reclaimed. We all recognize that, but we also recognize that, you know, there are neighbors out there, and, and it's been extremely dry, so whatever they can do to get some water down and, and dust coat, put some dust coating on.
Mr. Chairman, my, my point is, and that's fine, I, I agree, that's fine, but in terms of this dust and everything, and, and for the developer to apply some water to the site, that's something that the county board can certainly ask prior to their approval, how, how is that going?
Absolutely, and Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Robbins, that's something that they can ask and push for, and I, I think the operator's getting the message, so hopefully, that, that issue is getting taken care of.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That'll be addressed, okay. Heard the discussion? Okay, any further discussion on that? At this time, I
Public hearing is over, so.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
This time, I will call for a vote, all in favor of the motion before us, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll go to our planning manager update, Mr. Davis. This time, we'll go to our planning manager update, Mr. Davis.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since our last meeting, the county board took up three items that you recommended for approval. Last week, on September fifth, the county board did approve the conditional use permit amendment to operate a farm market meat processing facility in Blakely Township. That was a non-barberiary that is the applicant and property owner. Also approved the conditional use permit amendment to expand and operate an indoor storage facility. That's the Lake Marion Mini Storage down in New Market Township. And finally, they approved the preliminary and final plat of Tangina Estates, which I think was in Spring Lake Township. I don't have that note here. So those were the three approvals, based on your recommendations. My second update is the volunteer appreciation picnic. Hopefully, you got an invitation to that as a planning advisory commission member. That is an annual picnic that the county does to recognize you as a volunteer, not just a commission member, but you truly are a volunteer. So all advisory commission members that the county has and all the volunteers are invited to the picnic. That is Tuesday, September nineteenth, four to seven p.m. at the Scott County Fairgrounds. Kara Madsen asked for an RSVP if you do plan to attend, so you can stop afterwards and let me know, or send Kara a note, and hopefully, we'll see you there. And then my third and final item was a note I sent out to the planning commission late last month regarding cannabis and some of the research and learning from Colorado. So I have made contact with a planner out in Peblow, Colorado, who has experience licensing and some of the zoning issues that that county went through when it became legal in Colorado. And so the first step would be to put together a series of questions that we would like him and his other staff to respond to, that we might have, and then finally invite him to a workshop sometime this winter via Zoom or remote to have more dialogue back and forth. So staff has generated a few questions, but I am just wondering if you came into the door tonight with any pressing questions you want to learn from Peblow.
Mr. Chair, that's not specifically about that, but where are we on the timeline here? I know we have done something. Can you take us through that again?
Yeah. When it comes to the sale and the retail sale and growing of cannabis, the state will begin licensing those operations in January of 2025. So that gives us all of this year and all of 2024 to adopt any ordinances to regulate that new land use here in the county. We're still waiting for the state to release some model ordinances. When the legislation was passed, the new Office of Cannabis Management or something, I don't remember the proper name, but one of their tasks was to come up with model ordinances for all cities and counties to work from and adapt to their local situation. We haven't heard when that release will happen. But in the meantime, we can just start coming up with some of the framework that we want to look at when it comes to adopting a new ordinance. My goal would be probably by this time next year, maybe by late summer, early fall, we are holding a public hearing on our new ordinance dealing with this land use. The only way that would get moved up is if we feel like we have an active developer or a business that is knocking on our door, looking for sites, and we may then want to move that timeline up. Right now, there is no one knocking on our door, looking for sites. So that's part of your question, but there's other things happening. On October third, the county board will be holding a public hearing to prohibit the public use of cannabis on county property and on county parkland, both owned by the county and owned by the Three Rivers Park District. So that's a, you might be hearing about that in the local papers, but that is just public use of cannabis prohibited in those county areas. That's, I think, the update. I must be thinking of more.
Yeah, I am. Can I just clarify? You can't, can you manufacture the cannabis right now in Scott County or sell it? You can't sell it or make? The county board has instituted a what, a moratorium?
No. The county board did not institute a moratorium. The reason why it can't happen in Scott County is because it can't happen anywhere in the state of Minnesota until January of 2025.
All right. That's what I
Except on tribal land.
Except on tribal land. All right. I appreciate, thank you, Mr. That was something I wanted to get clear.
I think it would be helpful to ask our counterparts in Colorado. They put the statutes together. They published the statutes. I'd love to know what surprises or what problems they found, because it's the old, you know, give an inch and they take a mile. I'd love to find out, given expert ordinance, what happened that they didn't think about or, you know, again, surprises or problems.
Yeah, that's good.
I believe, is there any limit in the county about homegrowing this?
No, I mean, it's the state law in terms of how much you can homegrow and have on your possession in your home. And the county didn't go any further. And I don't know if we can go any further on that possession question. I think that's just the new state law.
And then, where are the cities in Scott County going with this? That's the other question I would have, because we have a county ordinance, and then how do we, how do we be compliant with what the cities are doing, or is there going to be any acknowledgement of that? Because all the cities could go in different directions with that.
Yeah. And that could be a question that we could learn from Peblow, too. There's larger cities went a different direction than they did in the, Peblow had the same setup where they were the planning and zoning authority for all the unincorporated area of the county. So it's a very similar setup, but we could ask them if that raises any issues, if their cities did anything different. But to your question about here in Scott County, I think some cities did pass a moratorium. I can't remember which ones, but I think the same number of cities did not do a moratorium and are taking the same approach that the county board took. If nothing can happen till 2025, what's the reason to do a moratorium?
Right.
But all of us are in the same situation of doing this research and starting to think about what ordinances we're going to draft. And we're pretty good about then sharing those. If a city comes up with an ordinance, I'm sure I'll start seeing it and sharing it, and we can decide what we like or don't like.
Mr. Chair, Brad, can you, without, can you maybe make available or have your staff make available the cities that have done something that's more restrictive? We've got all these cities, some might have passed a moratorium. It'd be nice to get that all on one page. It's not too much to ask.
Yep. Mr. Chair. Brad, could you clarify that tribal property? Is that on tribal part of it where the casino and stuff is? Or is that part of the other properties they own in Scott County? I mean, is that, you consider tribal property?
I'm not positive. I think it's got to be in the trust property that's in the trust.
Because they own a lot.
And so, yeah, tribal governments can own a lot of property, but then there's a process to put it in the trust. And I think it may be only property in the trust that is exempt from county zoning.
Brad, I had a question. When we had our last meeting, we seemed to talk about self-contained growing uses. You, you know, you decide to grow on your place, and then you set up a little store and you sell it, blah, blah, blah. What is, what provisions are there, or what rules govern, say, a farm deciding that instead of farming corn, they're going to farm cannabis and then sell it? Not process it and sell it, but sell it to someone else to process it? Is that covered?
That will be a use that we're going to have to cover, and I think it's close to what we call the microbusiness, where you can grow a certain amount on premise and then also sell it right from that location. And so we will need to determine where in the county would we want to allow microbusinesses? And if we allow them in our agricultural zoning districts, then it's very conceivable someone could buy a farm and do just what you said.
Yeah. Because I thought about that afterwards and thought, you know, what's to keep me from taking the acreage I have and say, okay, we're just going to grow cannabis. I don't want to process it. I don't want to sell it, but I'll grow it and we'll send it somewhere else.
I believe the state still puts a maximum to the amount of acreage you could, you could put into the production of
I don't know if Scott County ever listed cannabis as an noxious weed, but a lot of counties did a lot of times. So that'd be interesting to see if it was still, it'd be interesting to look at the, see if that's still
How many acres can
For a long time, it was always listed as one of the noxious weeds that you
Yeah. And how many acres you can do, because that could be the difference between somebody just roping off one field on their farm to do a field of cannabis, as opposed to somebody with a big farm deciding, hey, I'm just going to grow cannabis.
Yeah. It feels like the state still put a limit on how much outdoor production you can have. And I think it was four or five acres?
Oh, really? It was what?
Four to five acres, I think, of outdoor.
Really small, yeah.
Pretty small. So I don't think we'll see a day where someone will come in with twenty, thirty acres of this product.
There goes that future plan for me.
So this private group, privately growing crop, you said this, because of the economic reasons and others, the county has to provide some extra security to those farms or not?
Extra security?
Yeah. Who is responsible for the growing of that crop? So, apprentice owner, but because of the concern for the thefts and people just taking that half, will, or can we say that this is the reason that we are putting extra steps or because the county has to provide more additional security to the farms? Or we don't care?
I understand the question, Commissioner. I don't know if we have a lot of data that says it does require more security. It will require more deputies going by the property. I don't know if we have that data, but if we did have that data, it could then help us decide where in the county do we want to allow that type of use? I just haven't seen data that it requires more police calls, sheriff's calls, fire calls. But that's the stuff we could ask from Peblow to see if they saw patterns that these uses generate a lot of police calls.
This is going to really sound dumb, but, you know, if you grow hay, you have to have certain equipment to harvest your hay and bale your hay or roublebale your hay. And so a farm that's growing hay has all the equipment they need to take care of that. What kind of equipment is used? Fortified acres is not that big. I mean, is it done by hand, or do they need special equipment to harvest it? Is there an investment in that? I'd really like to know that piece of it. Because to me, if you, it's one thing to put in five acres of pot if you can hand harvest it yourself and sell it to somebody, but if you have to get equipment to do it, that's kind of a different thing. I have no idea how you harvest that stuff.
Good question. Can I ask that?
We know we don't burn it afterwards.
Sure.
There's a show on, it's called Belushi. It's Jim Belushi. He's got a growing field out wherever he's at. Good show to watch if you want to learn about that. I'm just saying, it's on the, it's on, I don't know what cable channel it's on, but it's got Jim Belushi's
I'm going to stick with hay production, but you know, it just was interesting to me, what kind of an investment needs to go in to do your five acres of cannabis? And what's the return on that? You know, is it really a lucrative business if you're going to grow it and sell it to someone else? That's the part that's all really unknown to me.
Very good. Well, if you have other questions after tonight, send them my way. I'll probably put together an email with a list of questions by the end of the week or early next week, see what kind of information we get, and then that will set up in-person, sit down with them as I'm meeting.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for taking care of that.
Thanks for the research on that. Yes.
Got a question for Brad. I'm a paper from Louisville Township. In your ordinances or whatever you're going to come up with, are they going to be including the townships in your thing, or do we have to come up with our own?
No. It'd be like all of our ordinances, we'd want to make sure the townships are supportive of it.
Okay.
So we would have whatever meetings we need or discussions we need to make sure all the townships support it.
Go ahead.
So they'd all have input.
I don't want to have to try to do this as a township supervisor.
No, I understand.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else for the cause? Mr. Davis? Okay? Anyone else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Robbins, second by Commissioner Hanson. All in favor of vote aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We are adjourned.